And I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. And remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting, to first notify me as vice chair, filling in for Teri, and I'll then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. So, we're going to take a couple things out of order. First, we're going to welcome Lori, her very first meeting as superintendent.
Welcome.
John?
Yep.
Thank you.
(applause)
Lori, on behalf of Michael Casparian, Susan Zavala, and Mara Aldrich of the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, wanted to welcome you. There's some towels here for the beach for Falmouth. And you've got your Falmouth Public Schools maroon F here. I'm just going to pass this on down to you. A little present. Welcome.
Thank you. This is awesome. (laughter) I'm so happy to be here. So happy to have you here. So, we are going to take a couple things out of order. We will absolutely take public comment, and I remind you that public comment is two minutes per individual to items not on tonight's meeting agenda, and that no discussion will take place. But Lori wanted to make her statement from her superintendent's report at the start, so that everybody would hear it.
Madam Vice Chair, School Committee in the Falmouth community. I would first like to thank the many welcoming emails. It is very nice to be in Falmouth and among such caring and concerning involved parents. I began my new position just two weeks ago, and the most important thing I've been faced with is the proposed Gosnell facility next to the Morse Pond School. As you will soon learn, I investigate matters thoroughly and keep an open mind while gathering information. Since my arrival, I reflected on many emails with an open mind and took many phone calls from concerned parents. I talked with Gosnell to understand the type of facility and the operational protocols of the proposed facility. I talked with the chief of police and our school safety committee. I reviewed police logs. I walked the entire grounds between the Morse Pond School and the proposed site. And I talked with the zoning board of appeals and the town's attorney to understand the process and the school committee's rights within the process. Along with the school committee, I arranged an information session at the high school to hear about Gosnell's safety plan and from the many concerned parents. You will find my approach to be attentive and thoughtful. As I stated in my letter dated July 10th, my first and foremost concern is always the health, safety, and welfare of our students that you entrust us with every single day. Safety comes in many different forms. There is ensuring the entrances to our schools are safe from unwanted intruders. There is ensuring our students can safely walk and our buses can safely transport our students during inclement weather. And then there are times that we will be faced together with situations outside of our control, like the one that we were faced with over the last couple weeks. Based on the information I've gathered thus far, I was becoming, it was becoming apparent that although we could provide the physical safety of our students during the school day with increased security measures, there were still concerns about the student's safety to and from school and the possible risk of psychological effects that our students could suffer by the increased exposure of situations not suited to our children. For these reasons, I commend Gosnell for listening to our concerns and making the decision to not pursue the location next to Morse Pond. I fully support, as I heard from many people, that an expanded facility treatment center to help those in need is absolutely what we want, but just not next to one of our schools. At this time, we don't see a need for the July 25th meeting, as the situation has been resolved. I look forward to shifting the focus to the upcoming school year. Parents will be invited to several opportunities to meet with me when school starts up, and I look forward to getting to know you and hearing about the strengths and challenges of our schools, and I look forward to working together in the next months and years ahead. Thank you.
Thanks Sharon, that out of order. And I just wanted to make a quick statement about the process. It's been a really long couple weeks for all of us and for all of our families and community. We have heard from tons of people, all asking us to just do something, and the thing is, as in a butter, we weren't entirely sure what that something was. We didn't know what the process actually looked like, even as late as yesterday. But it is really clear to us what we can't do. We can't share our opinions and deliberate by email and by phone. So, the only thing that we can do is adhere to the open meeting law and have all of our conversations and deliberations in public. That's the only time, when we meet as a full group, that's the only time that we're discussing school business. And individually, we don't really have any power. It's only when we sit together that we do. But following all those rules makes it look like we're moving really slow. So, thank you for being patient with us as we moved through our regular process and allowing us time to be really thoughtful in our decision-making, because I know that everybody takes that really seriously. We take that responsibility really seriously. So now, I'm really happy that we can move forward onto other stuff. If anyone wants to see more about how we operate, it's in our operating protocols tonight on the agenda. Super interesting reading, in case anyone cares. So, I see there's a lot of public. So, help yourself to whoever wants to go first. Just come on up and have a seat and tell us your name, and you have two minutes.
And just to be clear, because we have a few folks, I'm just going to keep time like I did last time.
That would be awesome.
Just so that we stay true to our word and that we are mindful of time and that I'm not giving preferred treatment to anyone, or not preferred treatment, or whatever.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Amy Leonardi, and I'm here today on behalf of the parents and the community that organized in opposition to the proposed expansion of Gosnell. Thank you for hearing our concerns from the very beginning. We are appreciative that you took those concerns seriously and proactively scheduled a large community forum meeting in order to ensure that information could be shared. We are also grateful that upon our request to be represented and included on the agenda, you allowed us to do so. This was always about the safety of our children. The parents in Falmouth, as well as the community, entrust you and the amazing teachers and staff 180 days a year to both educate and protect our children with the same level of tenacity that we as their parents and caregivers do. 180 days a year for 12 years, we are trusting you as our leaders, administrators, teachers, and staff. We as a community understand the normal risks that go along with that. But had this facility actually happened as proposed, the risk would have increased, and to us, that risk was unacceptable and non-negotiable. We are so thankful you listened and heard us. We know the passions were high, and at times, we may have let them get the best of us. But we are grateful to you for acting proactively as much as you were able to do so. I would also like to personally thank Mrs. Reed in the superintendent's office, who I enjoyed working with immensely. She was always calm and helpful over the past several weeks. She deserves a medal for fielding what I'm sure is hundreds of phone calls. Also, thank you to Melissa for her courage in the initial community meeting held by Gosnell. A leader steps in when needed, and she earned the trust we placed in her and proof why we elected her. Moving forward, we will now focus on showing support for the need for increased staff to our first responders departments, as this also has a direct impact on our children. We are also actively engaging in changing zonal laws in Falmouth, as well as state legislation to help protect our children so they can learn in the best possible environment. They are our future, and we will continue to protect that, as we know we can count on all of you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're going to make me cry.
And under two.
Yes, right at two.
Who's next?
Yeah, a little bit.
We're just supporting.
Good job, support.
That's awesome. I'm not an entourage coming to support me when I go to do stuff. Hi.
My name is Megan Hamilton-McKean, and I'm the mother of two children at Falmouth Public Schools. I also graduated from Falmouth Public Schools. And just full disclosure, I'm an educator in Massachusetts of history, and I taught social studies, including psychology, and so I'm really concerned for the home I'm seeing. But I'm really excited that you guys are here and open and meeting, and that's important. So, I brought with me today my letter, and I just wanted to read it. So, I wrote, "To Falmouth, Massachusetts, elected representatives, town hall, school committee, etc., dear Falmouth elected representatives, hello. Thank you for caring about our community and representing us as we move through some no doubt historic times. I write to ask that you deeply consider all diverse perspectives and sources of information regarding the proposed dual diagnosis, detoxification, and rehabilitation facility planned for construction somewhere in our town. The first proposed location next to the Morse Pond School was inappropriate for a number of reasons, and no matter where the facility is proposed to be built poses numerous concerns and challenges. Please insist upon creating an appropriate environment for those impacted by this expansion process and project. Those in need of services and those zoned around the facility deserve the best environment. Thank you."
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Meg.
Anyone else like to speak? Last chance.
We don't bite.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks. Kids don't want to stay. I got to tell you, we've got some class acts in this town.
Absolutely.
Our meetings have been, we've had some really wonderful comment and input.
I'm humbled.
Seriously engaged parents. So, next up, we have discussing act on CDM agreement. Patrick, you want to, anything you want to say about it?
No, just for clarification, this is for the engineering and OPM services, design engineering OPM services. That CDM would be provided on approximately September 25th, a decision on the bid that would be the general contractor and do the bulk of this work would come back to the school committee for vote. So, that's probably 80% of the budget would come back. So, the process continues, and we just need to keep this thing moving forward.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the agreement from CDM for the artificial turf field?
I'll make a motion to accept the CDM agreement.
A second. Any discussion?
Just a clarifying point. So, in saying about the engineering, the OPM, it means that CDM Smith will be overseeing this process. They're not actually the ones who are going to be doing the construction.
Correct. They're putting together, there are a bid document that a general contractors will be bidding on. Hopefully, we'll gather, you know, three or four bids, and the general contractor will be doing, will show up with the shovels.
Yeah, and they'll be the ones who are helping gather those bids.
Correct.
To work, so that's great.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the contract from CDM Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Great, thank you. And thanks Sharon for getting us the copies. I appreciate it. Next is discussing and acting on our operating protocols. So, I made light, but seriously, I mean, we put a lot of work into this a few years ago.
It's a big deal.
As ways, a way to guide our work and how we work together, and how our operations, our communication, our decision-making will go and what we'll hold each other to. I don't know, this is probably all new to you.
Well, no, but I read my, I think this is comprehensive. It's some of the best I have ever written or read anywhere, and I just want to, you know, commend all of you for writing this. I'm quite impressed.
It was a lot of work.
It is. It's very comprehensive. It was a lot of work. So, we would, we don't necessarily need to approve them, we just need to all agree and sign them. I actually had two little edits. Did anybody else have anything that they wanted to add?
I had a discussion, I had a discussion point. And it's more to do, I mean, I'm fine with the, you know, the gist of the entire document. But I'd like to propose that we meet at the different schools also. And I'd like to propose that we do it, for example, we have seven schools to do it as three in year one and four in year two, and so on. So, then that way, each school is hosting us every other year. And then as far as, within the course of that, we could do a group tour before the meeting. And then at that time, we could discuss any capital expenditure projects that are either on, you know, the close horizon or three or four or five years out. So, then that way, when we're voting on something, oh, the roof or the boiler or something, oh, remember that? We were there, just, it would never have been more than a year away from having us all been there collectively as a group. I think that's something very powerful. In addition, allowing a little bit more, you know, seating for parents and folks to attend and giving them the opportunity in different venues.
Good. I think that's a great idea, and that actually is how the meetings used to run. So, when I came on the school committee six years ago, or five years ago, we were going to all the different schools. So, my understanding is that it was just complicated with filming. So, to ensure that we can still film live, which maybe now with technology, it is possible.
I think we rounded the corner on that.
Yeah, so that would be worth looking into, because that wasn't the issue.
Because that was the only issue with it.
Yeah. So, maybe, and I don't know that it would have to be in here, but I do think that's something we should try to look into doing.
I think it's a really good idea.
It is, and I love the tour idea.
Me too.
So, can we just push that to Lori to investigate?
Sounds good. Just wanted to get that up.
Thank you. All right.
No, I absolutely, but it kind of goes along. I was going to propose that periodically through the year, I wanted principals to bring in a team, possibly to do a presentation on something, you know, that's happening. One of the things, and I'm going to, I know I'm repeating myself, but as I was learning about Falmouth, all the wonderful things that I learned about what's happening here, you know, I just think it's an opportunity for them all to. So, if we're at the school, then they could do the presentation at the school, at their building, it would be their turn and get to really kind of showcase the wonderful things that are happening, because there's a lot going on that's great.
Yeah, I love that.
So, that kind of would coincide with that.
So, in the first line, I just wanted to take out the word "including" because it says elected members of the school committee, and the superintendent is not elected. It's just a technical thing. So, you would say "we" and the superintendent is not elected. I don't know how everybody feels about that.
I like it.
Okay. And this one, I'm not sure if, we don't need to like spend forever on this, so if it turns into a giant discussion, I'm happy to just push it off. But number 12 says, "When not in a scheduled meeting, channel questions, concerns, and requests for information, data through the school committee chair and superintendent." And our email procedure is actually supposed to, it's supposed to go through the chair always, not directly to the superintendent. At least, that's how we've been operating, so I would cross out superintendent, just to make it how we actually operate.
Yes.
But, you know, everybody feel free to weigh in.
So, that's saying that the, because I do think school committee members can ask the superintendent questions.
But it's supposed to go through the chair, because otherwise, she would have nine people asking things.
Okay, so, okay.
I don't know what you think.
I think, yeah.
I think this, I think this says it perfectly as it stands, because it is saying through the chair and the superintendent. So, in other words, it's just.
Oh, I didn't read it that way.
Yeah, so you're addressing, so you're, I don't want to limit it to where we have only the chair interacting with the superintendent, you know?
Yeah, I didn't read it as a, okay.
I see.
As a phrase, it's like, it's a group.
I see it now.
It's a grouping, it's a phrase. So, you're doing it through the, through the chair and the superintendent.
Yeah, that may, if you read it that way, then it makes sense. Would it, did you have?
So, I don't have a question on the phrasing, but just, I like to follow the rules, so I want to be clarified on those. So, you know, we have all the subcommittees, and often in the subcommittees, you're dealing more directly with some of the central office staff. So, usually, I've been sending questions related to that subcommittee work to the appropriate person, copying the superintendent. So, never directly to staff without copying superintendent.
Right.
But I haven't been going through the chair on those, so.
That's true. So, maybe we should.
Just to clarify what I need to do.
Yeah, maybe we should take that up at the retreat to actually formalize how we all do it, because that wouldn't make any sense. Why would you CC the chair on a subcommittee that they're not on? Right? So, I don't know. Maybe we should take that, I think that's a more complicated thing. Should we just leave this like this?
Yes.
I think we should leave 12 as is and fix edit in sentence one.
All right. And then we'll, I'll make a note for Teri that we should take that on at our retreat and figure out, is the right time to figure stuff like that out? So Sharon, how do we do this then? You're going to print some giant thing up for us?
Yeah, like we did last time.
Awesome.
So, I'll fix it, and if everyone, we can wait until the next meeting, or if you want to come in and sign it.
Okay. Half of us are in here all the time.
You want to visit?
I just have a suggestion on the verbiage for that first one. Rather than put "we" as elected members, we could just actually leave it as it reads, "as elected members of the Falmouth School Committee, comma, we, along with the superintendent." So, just you replacing "including" with "along with."
Yeah, either way.
And then it's just, and you don't only have to change one word.
I just don't want it to say.
However you want to word it, Sharon.
Just so it doesn't sound like the superintendent is elected, because they're not. Okay, awesome. So, we'll come in and sign those. Thank you. Next, we have the capital plan, the blue version.
Sure.
Patrick, listen.
So, the notes that I provided, the memo I provided in the blue plan are aligned. All we're talking about here is the year one, and we're talking about the moving forward in terms of submitting these projects to the town for the town to review in their capital review process. And they've given us a little, a little delay. They were supposed to be due today. We'll get them in tomorrow. And we have a few projects there. The Morse Pond ceiling replacements, that's, we believe that's going to take two phases. The ceiling tiles in Morse Pond, like lots of tiles out there, do have asbestos-containing materials. They are not broken, they're not damaged, they're not, they're not being disturbed or anything, but we do want to create a process to remove those over time. Some of the tiles that have ACMs in them are actually above a dropped ceiling. So, when a remodel was done, they took an easier way to just ignore that. So, it's going to be a process. But, so next summer, these are projects primarily for next summer. We know Mullen Hall, we'd like to get a start on some of the painting there. The East Falmouth Controls and Unit Event Project, we'd like to continue moving forward on that. And then that school zone signage, I know people are, care about that topic. I did meet with the DPW. They have the T-ticket school zone replacement project in their 2019 sidewalk plan, and then they'll replace or move that school zone. And then they asked us to put in two school zone replacements in our budget, and I believe it's, I believe it's Morse Pond and North Falmouth. So, we put that in there, and then we also have, we're close to being done in some of our upgrades of our public address systems in the schools, you know, with the morning announcements. So, we believe we can get two of those public address systems done also. So, those are the priorities. And then I did put in an amount of money. If you're paying attention closely, I need to figure out with the town CFO how she wants me to handle the planning of the field replacement that we haven't even built yet over the next 10 years. So, there was some discussion about allocating a certain amount of money every year that she would put in a fund. I did two things. I allocated the money, and then I put it out 10 years from now, so one of those will go away.
So, do, do we need to create, like, do we need to put a placeholder in for town meeting to create some fund to hold the money?
I need to have that, the CFO will tell, she'll tell us what to do.
Okay.
What she wants to do. She'll tell us. So, all I'm looking for here is a motion to approve the capital plan, the year one capital plan priorities as set, as recommended by me, something like that. If you have any questions. The other ones, these are moving targets, so, you know, if we feel like we have to move something up or move something back, that's possible. We're not voting on a, you know, a, in the cement, never-changing 10-year plan. This is just sort of giving us an idea of how we're prioritizing things over the next 10 years, or how we think we're going to prioritize things over the next 10 years.
As of right now.
Yeah. If things change, things change.
And this is, the budget subcommittee has had a chance to look at this a little more, too.
Just to piggyback on that, but fiscal year 19 would be set in stone once we.
Correct.
Yes.
We're just prioritizing those. That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, and then next year, next July, we'll do the same thing, that kind of thing.
John, did you have something?
No, so you're kneeling for a motion to approve the budget or the prioritization of the items.
Prioritization, right.
Okay, so I motioned to, I motioned that I should not take this call. And, no, but I motioned to approve the year one capital plan priorities as stated, aforementioned by Patrick Murphy.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Megan?
I just had a question on the Mullen Hall. General repairs, does that include the front doorway at all?
So, yeah, that's, rotting wood, those kind of things.
Okay, there's a railing gone on.
That's what we're trying to think of, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Exactly, yeah.
Know what that actually was. Melissa?
When you were talking about the school zone signage.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you mention East Falmouth School, and the, the school zone sign closest to Davisville Lights, so closest to Route 28, is still not working properly?
So, there's a, unfortunately, there's a difference between replacing school zone signs and actually getting them to work properly. The vendor that has programmed these signs is under the DPW's contract, and we do need to, we've asked the DPW to help us get these things fixed, and it's been ongoing.
I would like it this fixed before September.
School starts.
Yeah, because the Lawrence School one is broken, too.
Because this is, they're little, they're erratic, and people fly down that road. It's a long, straight road, and they fly. So, I would just like it a priority of the DPW, and I'm tired of asking. Sorry.
No, I.
I hear you, mom.
I hear you. I appreciate that.
Any last discussion? All in favor of approving the year one capital plan as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks. And if we need to, we only have one, actually, we don't even have a meeting in August, so I don't know when the deadline is for getting something on town meeting, when we would need to approve that warrant, because we, whatever the placeholder is, if we need to create something, we would have to schedule a meeting, because we don't, we only have our retreat in August.
Right.
I think. Maybe.
We might have.
I'm just filling space, because, you know, I'm supposed to be sitting over there, so, I don't know. What do we have?
We still have it scheduled.
Tuesday, the 14th?
14th.
Okay, so if we needed to, we could meet that day, even though we're meeting the day before?
Right.
No, the week after?
No, the Monday after, the 20th.
Or 20th. I just want to make sure we don't miss our chance to have something on the warrant if we need to.
I just need a clarification on that last one. So, you rephrased it to say.
Oh, did I say?
You rephrased it to say we're approving the year one budget.
Capital one plan.
Capital plan, rather.
Isn't that what we were doing?
We're approving with the priorities, correct? Well, we could, we would actually need kind of part and parcel to do both, but I asked how you wanted to phrase it.
The priorities are defined. The priorities are attached to the budget. So, all, what we're doing is submitting, I have to submit sort of individual requests, and then the town capital planning group, CIP group, they review those requests. So, they've just asked me to put in, this is approximately, as you can see, it's the same amount of money every year.
But for the, but for the sake of the motion and the second.
Right.
We need to have it read. It should be what we, what we motioned and seconded.
So Sharon, did you get the original motion?
I have motioned to approve the year one capital, capital one priorities for FY 2019.
Okay, that's correct. I'm with you on that. Thank you.
That works.
Okay, next, Patrick, yeah, you're a busy guy tonight. Next, we have the status of the Lawrence School auditorium seats surplus.
Yeah, so, just for clarification, the project, we believe the vendor will be showing up at the end of the month, July 30th or thereabouts. There is, I know there's been a desire to surplus some of these seats to that, and then there would be some level of donation. My recommendation is that you make a general motion to surplus seats. These are not individual seats, so, right, you take them apart, you lose an arm kind of thing. So, it's not, it's not, we don't get hundreds of seats. And in order for us to surplus these. not, we don't get hundreds of seats. And in order for us to surplus these seats, we're individually, Don Drew will individually sort of unbolt seats and put them aside and do some work with that. So, so we have a few weeks. If there, if you do believe, you know that there's a desire in the community to purchase or donate for these seats to the PTO at some point, just give me a suggested number, and we can set those aside.
So we don't need an actual number?
No, just a general number about surplusing the Lawrence School auditorium seats is fine.
Patrick?
Yep.
Just to clarify, for anyone who could, might be watching and is interested in Lawrence School seats, when you say, "how many need to be together?"
So-
So if people, like at last town meeting, were saying, "Oh, I'd like to take a seat," I, you know, when you say, "more than one," how many are they now looking at?
So in order to, so if you, if you, if you remove, let's say, two from one row, you would not have an arm on the other end of a row. So you'd, you might, you might take a seat from the end of another row and attach it to that to have a set of three. That sort of seems like it might be reasonable for, I don't know what purpose, but somebody might enjoy it.
Or four, or four.
Potentially four, yeah. Yeah, or a whole row.
Right, exactly.
If somebody's really-
Two chairs that only have-
Two more than two, right?
Well, you could have, you could have two chairs, but they would only have one arm.
You can't get just one. It may be hard to get just one with arms.
Or you could have two that only has one arm.
Right. I guess so.
Okay. So now we understand why this is happening.
And this is what I say to that. You get what you get, and you don't get upset. If you want the large chairs, this is the offer on the table.
Right.
The armless one.
You get the one armless chair.
We don't discriminate if that's the chair that you want.
And this will be going through the PTO.
Yeah, we don't want-
Is there a PTO at Lawrence?
Yes, there is. And the Tom Bushy, the principal of, over there, has reached out to try to create a process or, over there. They have not, have not sort of connected yet, but they are in the pro, they are in-
Might I suggest-
We could really use some press on this.
Might I suggest that we promote this?
Let them figure it out.
Might I suggest that?
Andrea? So that, that process is like my biggest concern on it, that, that you're not burdening somebody with something that could be really big, and how does this happen, and who gets priority, and how many, like, there are so many questions to figure just that piece out. So what I wanted, that's fine, somebody can figure it out or decide not to. What we're voting on, are we voting on something?
Just to create, just to put them to surplus.
To surplus some amount of chairs.
Versus them going into the landfill, is that the correct word?
Some of them will go into the landfill.
Right.
We will, we will try to surplus some of them.
Right.
Yes.
Just, not that I have anything against someone that may want to do a pretend town meeting in their basement or something, you know, with the seats.
Don't judge us.
I'm sure there'll be a big demand for it.
Don't judge the people that want the chairs.
We have aspiring children who want to be in our area.
With that said, a couple of things, I'm not, you know, there's a lot of old, old theaters and schools and whatnot. I don't know if we, you know, posted it somewhere to see if we could make some money off of these. You know, if you have somebody that has, you know, in New Bedford or something, a big old theater or something that might, you know, really need the exact type of seats is one thing. And other than that, I'm fine with surplusing. I just would like to caution that, that those big racks of seats, you know, you have, in all seriousness, you have a lot of injury potential and liability potential for the school, something to think about, you know. And then, and then what's our liability if somebody doesn't strap it right in their truck, and then it flies off and hurts somebody? I mean, it's, that's the world we live in.
Here's what I have to say. You get what you get, you don't get upset. First come, first served. You put it in the back of your truck, you own it, period, done.
Well, you can say that, Melissa, but unless they sign a waiver, we're on the-
That's fine. I fully understand that, John. I'm well aware of the law and how it goes. Yes. But what I'm saying is that we can certainly cover ourselves in that.
Well, we'd have to be on the side of that.
Leah's turn.
Correct. We don't have act on this. We just have status. So I just want a clarification on-
We can still act on it. I mean, if people are getting fair notice that we're going to talk about the surplus.
We're going to get a follow-up from Principal Bushy in reference to how many seats will be available, correct?
Yeah, well, but if, I would suggest that if people feel there is desire inquiries for these seats, give me a number, because we have not fielded any inquiries for these seats. So I do, my preference is not to be, you know, we're being billed to demolish and throw away these seats. I don't want to be billed, I don't want to have incurred that cost in that time twice.
Right, unnecessary.
I wonder if perhaps we could, and I might kick myself for saying this, put a email out to town meeting members, since it was town meeting where it was announced, and I know there was a lot of conversation at the last town meeting, that X number of people were interested in donating some funds for the chairs, buying the chairs, having the chair, whatever. I know there was a lot of conversation around that, so maybe we want to send an email.
I have the list, and I can give it to you if you'll send the email.
I'm happy to.
All right. Division of Labor, great.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes. So the date for this would be by July 30th, when the vendor's going to be there to start the project. So there's a really small window, because is there any place to store these?
There's place to store some, not hundreds.
So they're going to move on it?
This has to be done.
Right. And so if we say yes to surplus, let's use 10, and then nobody ends up wanting them, now that's where you're talking about incurring the cost the second time. So if we do that, and then we still now need to dispose of them. So that's the risk that we're taking.
We need to have everything done by July 30th, when the vendor shows up, right? Okay.
So if you did have any, I mean, I think posting and if the, I don't think we should have to advertise to the persons interested, but if we did do an email, at least they have a deadline that they personally have to go by.
A very clear-
You have to pick them up.
You have to pick them up.
Very clear deadline.
Yeah, I, I just don't want, you know, Patrick to be scrambling, trying to, you know, people are-
Yeah. I mean, the custodians have enormous amounts of work to do in the summertime in adding to their workload. Don Drew has been nothing but professional in encouraging ways to resolve this, and he, he was the one that came up with the idea of, okay, if we, I could, I could give them in groups of three, but you only have certain end rows that actually work.
Yeah.
Well, those kind of things. It's, it's not like you get, you know, 300 standalone chairs out there.
Right. So what do you need from us then?
Just a general surplus.
Okay. So you don't want us to tell you numbers?
I don't want a number. No, no.
But you're looking for numbers in some way?
Yep, yep. You're welcome to email me over the next couple of weeks if you hear that there's interest. If we hear there's interest, we'll set more aside, too.
Okay.
Well, let me clarify. Are we, are we going to send out an email so that our families know? So we're, are we going to-
I can send an email.
I mean, to allow them to know, and that it's by a certain date, and here the, you know?
I can send an email to town meeting, and then I can, well, the enterprise is here, and we can-
I think it should come from the board.
We can also send one out through ConnectIt, right?
Right.
And to all of our families, right?
You can, yeah.
I mean, is that, I guess I just want a little direction on if that's part of what-
The momentum that was at school, that was at town meeting, I think that that's probably the smartest way to do it, so that there's no, I didn't know, I would have bought.
Right.
But I think you could do a call, one of those.
That's a shitty idea.
Yeah, emails out to everybody, and let them then reach out to town meeting members, and I think that's good, and then post it on the website.
And if we have a date on it-
Yeah, it has to be on there.
-a five date that I picked up by.
But otherwise, we don't want to put people through the effort of putting-
Right.
Sets of three together and any of that.
Exactly.
And missing that, that pickup that we're going to have to pay for a second time.
So we have two important deadlines. So we'll work to figure out.
And I do think this should be a component, because not just for the transportation, or that you're inviting people into a, a working and building area. In addition to that, we should run by legal as to what, you know, if somebody has a chair that they're now in the house, which we've chosen that is an antiquated chair, and we've been tearing it out, you know, that they'd sign off on something to say that, you know, so we're not liable. A year from now, somebody, the chair caves in or something, you know. I mean, that's, I think it's worth covering that.
Who's the contact person?
For, for, if people are interested in inquiring about these, they can reach out to me. That's fine.
Thanks, Patrick. All right. So do we have a motion to surplus some number of the chairs from the Lawrence School Auditorium?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any last discussion?
I would like to make an amendment to the motion to include the items that we had included as far as having the legal comment on it.
Well, this is just the surplus of the chairs, not a process for getting rid, not a process for donation.
Okay, well, we have to vote on that, or the process for donation, after?
No, we wouldn't.
Well, then I, I cannot approve this in good conscience without having some kind of protection against the potential injury, which I think there's numerous potential for the injury here.
Okay. So we have a motion, so you're not making an amendment, then?
I'd like to make an amendment. I did, I motioned to, I mean, I made the amendment to include the legal component.
I, we can't make a, a legal component about donation related to surplusing unused materials.
Okay. Then I'll leave it be then, and I'll just have to vote against it.
Okay. So there's no amendment. So all in favor of approving the surplusing of Lawrence School Auditorium seats, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds?
Opposed.
And abstentions? So approves with one opposed. Next, we have routine business, the minutes from June 26. John, you have something on this?
Yeah, just a couple of things, actually, that has me arriving late. I was late, actually, but I was late for the 6 o'clock executive session. So it has me arriving at 6:35. I actually arrived into executive session at 6:20. So that's one amendment, one thing about the minutes. And then on the, under the Morse Pond section, bear with me as I find that section, it has, let me see, goal two is groaning program instead of growing, just a typo.
Where is it? What page was it?
Page 1, 2, 3, 4, page 4. Goal 2 for Tim McGlaughlin is that goal 2 grown, just an N versus growing, growing program. So just a typo there. So just those two items I have.
Goal 1, growing program. Oh, I was reading the wrong one. I'm like, this one's right.
Yeah, gun to goal 2.
The second one is wrong. Okay, great. Any last discussion on these before? Is there a motion to approve the minutes with those two edits?
I'll motion to approve them with those two edits.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Any abstentions? Next is the report from the superintendent.
Yes, so as I had stated before, my most important job over the last two weeks since I've come on board has been addressing the Falmouth situation. I, I have collected all of the emails and phone calls for the committee to review at some point. They're very thoughtful and touching emails. I also met with central office staff the week of July 2nd through July 6th for an in-depth look at their responsibilities and departments. I hosted an administrative workday on July 9th for all principals and central office administrators, and I attended the superintendent's conference from July 10th to July 13th.
Wonderful. Any questions for Laurie?
No.
There's a spider. Don't look at me. Sorry. Do you see it?
No.
Spider.
Sorry.
Oh, no, it's, it's so teeny. It's hanging from the ceiling. I know, but I have spider issues. So, sorry.
Fruit fly.
See what you got yourself into, look.
Did you see it?
Swirl, spider.
I have spider.
Evidently.
That's not even a spider.
Okay. Report from the chair?
No, I was actually, you said any?
Actually, what?
I was, had my hand up for real, not-
Oh, for real?
Not spider.
Not spider related? Please.
I just wanted to say, in addition to collecting all those, which I appreciate, I also want to say thank you to Kelly for all that extra effort to answering every one of those emails and making sure that-
You didn't know what you were signing up for.
I did get a comment from somebody who said, "Why wasn't there just like a blanket statement?" And they weren't. They were personalized, that we saw those, and I think people actually appreciate that you read that and responded to them individually. So thank you for that.
You're so welcome. But there's a reason we divvy those up between vice chair and chair, because I ended up doing both of those jobs. Terry leaving us in our time of need. Yeah, so I don't have any, thanks, Andrea. I don't have any report from the chair, other than Terry's in the outs, hopefully having a wonderful time. Are there any committee member reports or subcommittee reports?
I actually wanted to, you went to the next thing. I want, I don't have anything from the collaborative, but I wanted to echo what Andrea said about Laurie's handling of, you know, coming in into that, you know, with regards to your presenting in your section, Laurie. With regards to coming in, you're welcome, you know, we welcome you to the community, and right off the bat, you have a very challenging thing to address, and you handle it with dignity and aplomb. And I appreciate it, and we definitely made the right decision, and welcome to Falmouth.
Hopefully, the rest of the year will go more smoothly. It's not always. Sorry. Any other comments for-
Yeah, just a quick comment. Just a ad-voi to the community.
Yeah.
I just, the whole process, and we really didn't, legally, we really didn't have much that we could do until the process continued. Unfortunately, it didn't continue. But when the whole process started, it was always the health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff, and the community jumped on it. The safety of our kids was the most paramount thing. And in all the emails that I got, and all of us got, you know, you had an opportunity to really read in depth, whether it was statistics, whether it was just a concerned parent, whether it was a concerned group of parents. I just thought it was outstanding the way the community came together and said, "You know what? Our greatest resource are our kids, and we're going to take care of them." And that's great for the community to do. So hats off to the community.
Yeah.
Fantastic. I'm glad the process worked out the way it did. That's it.
Thanks. Thanks, Bill. Any last comments? Were there subcommittee reports?
Uh-uh.
Request for agenda items or follow-up information?
Any update on the, I always get the phrase of the position wrong, the, for the high school, the-
Oh, the wellness.
The wellness, not the high school, for the department.
Department head.
Yes.
Oh, great. Thanks.
So we, it was posted, we interviewed, we actually made an offer this past Friday, and we're waiting to see if the offer's going to be accepted.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Any last thoughts? I don't really know what to do with myself, but it's this early. I'm kind of confused.
Okay.
Okay. Melissa? Oh, you know what? Before you do your thing, sorry. See, this is why. I skipped all these things. So we had reports from Sonia, who's on vacation, and Charlie's report, and Cindy, and Jawani. And if there are questions, we can send them through you?
Yes, please.
Does anybody have any questions? If you do, feel free to-
I know we've-
Sorry.
Just one question. And it obviously always, I always question the fact that title programs seem to dwindle. And then one of the programs, I believe it was a Title III program, and somebody explained to me what, one, what a Title III program is, and since Sonia's trying to look at this Title III program down the line to provide grant money for a program that she's doing, how legitimate is that then?
Where are you seeing the Title III?
It's at the very end of Sonia's report, the last line.
And I pointed out, I had it out, and then my best, it was, we're still in the system knowledge, I lost it.
Do you want me to answer Title III questions? I have lots of-
Okay.
The SEI, the SEI one, it's, this coming year, we also expect to begin receiving Title III grants, grant funds to further support our comprehensive efforts. Well, I love the effort, and I think it's obviously needed, but I'm just always curious about grants.
So I can, I can explain the Title III grant. So a Title III grant is that you have 101 or more English language learners within your district. So Falmouth just hit that tipping point where we're able to get funding for English language learners. Title III is a very tricky grant in that you cannot supplant anything that's required by law to offer English language learners during the school day. So a lot of times, Title III funding is used for supplemental pieces, like before, after instruction of school, or summer programs. So it's actually, it's very exciting that we have this ability to get funding. It's probably going to be a pretty small number of dollars that we get, but we'll see when those numbers come out. Those numbers come out soon for Title III.
Yeah, I kind of like, I know you have progression of the lack of funding and the
other title programs. So I kind of, in my own mind, education dollars and-